So, okay.
All right.
Good to see or hear from you all. Let's start, start with introductions. We're going to open this meeting up at 6:30.
Likewise.
Take your pardon?
No, that's fine. It's likewise. I'm glad I have connection.
Okay, up. Us too. So, we're going to start this meeting. And. Let's start with introductions. Eric, you're first on my list.
Eric Casino, District Two.
Ed?
Ed Fleischer, District Two.
Doug?
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Raul?
Raul Delam, District One.
And I'm Jim Simmons in District Three. Hey Polly, just, I'm not sure how we kind of move Christie back from the panelist to the participants.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for an approval of the agenda as written.
Some of.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so next we're looking for an approval of March 17, 2021, meeting minutes.
The move that we approve the minutes from March 17?
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so this is our time for public comments. And if you're new, please, please raise your hand or let me know if you want to talk and I'll let you in. We aren't going, we have three minutes and which is signified by Polly, the timer. It goes from green to yellow, which is 30 seconds left, and then it'll turn red. And when it comes to the red, please kind of wind up your thoughts, so I don't have to interrupt you. Anybody out there? I don't see any hands or anybody looking to speak right now. Is there anybody wanting? Okay, there's one guy, John. John Woodford?
Hello Commissioners. I just want to be very brief tonight. I really want to ask you Commissioners to give real consideration to these some 2,600 plus people that are having their properties re-designated and will not be receiving any notice of that until the open house and public hearing. It just seems to me that those people should be notified right away. So far, you've reviewed some 70 cases on Lake Lawrence and Offutt Lake and have overturned the staff on every one of them. It makes me cringe to think about the impact on these some 2,600 more people that don't even know about this yet. The other thing I just want to comment on briefly about your special meeting on the 31st. I was being one who lives in the Lacey Urban Growth District. I was quite pleased to hear that Tom Water is not considering expansion of the urban growth area and is kind of content to keep urban growth areas and keep rural Thurston County rural. It seems on the Lacey side of things that that's not the case. Anyway, that's it. And I'll sit back and watch the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, John. Christie? Oops, looks like you're muted. Could you unmute yourself? There you go.
All right. Oh, it looks like got an echo. Can you? That's not going to work.
We, we hear you.
Okay, but it's an echo for you?
A little bit, but you're fine.
I'll be brief then. I just wanted to echo John, the previous caller. I, I think it's important to notify people well in advance. Those 2,600 folks. Because just another point is citizens don't have the resource. We don't have planning staff. We don't have lawyers. And so it takes a lot of time for us to digest and think about things and prepare. So what I would encourage you to notify people in advance. So, and the other thing I wanted to mention was about the wireless changes. The presentation that was done at last week's meeting was all about how to stop people, at least that the majority of it felt like that. That you don't want citizens to object to any of this. And it would be nice to see a balanced approach of here's some of the challenges and difficulties of expanding wireless. And of course, you're talking to someone who's using old fashioned cords in her house, and I like it that way. So anyway, those are my comments for today. I won't put you through the torture of this echo anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. So is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'm not seeing any other hands. Offers going once? Twice? Okay, no, we're moving on. Word to the work session concerning the joint plan, and Maya, you're up.
Thank you Commissioners. Maya Tippel, Senior Planning with Community, Senior Planner with Community Planning, excuse me. I'm here with Leah Davis tonight, and we are bringing back the joint plan, the Tom Water Joint Plan update. We have a short time on the agenda for the Commissioners to have a discussion if they have any questions tonight or if there was anything that they read that they'd like to discuss on the Planning Commission. I just want to note that the City of Tom Water staff is not with us tonight. He will be joining us again for the next meeting, but there may be questions that we do have to bring back and do some further research on. So this time is really for the Planning Commission to discuss if they have further questions on anything they've seen in the Tom Water Joint Plan. And I will defer to Leah for most of those questions, but we don't have a PowerPoint tonight. This is really just a time for you all.
Any thoughts, anybody?
Well, I, I know the, the one thing that I took away from a lot of it, I was, I was happy to see that the zoning is already supports enough housing that they don't feel like Tom Water needs to expand any over the next couple of decades. But with the little bit of zoning changes they did want to make, I understand why, why they want to make those zoning changes and that all seems pretty reasonable. But my biggest concern was that I'm not sure that these property owners are going to get adequate and ample notifications. And I'm not sure how to address that, but if we can make sure that these people know what's coming down the road for them, I'd feel a whole lot better about the process.
Okay, Leah Davis with Thurston County Community Planning. We have prepared letters for all of the property owners whose zones are being considered for amendment. And those will go out just as soon as we have a date selected for the next work session with the Joint Planning Commissions. And they'll also, of course, be notified of the public hearing and any subsequent work sessions we have.
Will that include also the people that are going to be impacted by the changes at the port for the runway overruns and danger areas?
That's correct. It will include all of the people whose property lies within that overlay zone as well as anyone within 500 feet of any of those properties in the overlay zone.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Raul, District One. And based on the information that you're going to be mailing to the folks, how many days in advance of the public hearing will they be receiving this information?
Well, it depends on how much time we have. We haven't gotten a confirmation of the next work session to get to notify them of that opportunity. And then, once we get, we set a hearing, I think, what is it, Maya, 20 days? Yeah, so I can speak a little bit to that. Typically, our notification, the minimum requirement for a legal notice is 20 days. And the minimum requirement for a mail out to landowners that are affected by zoning is 10 days. However, we do our best to do that mail out consistent with the legal notice so that they have that extra time to receive the mail, submit a written comment and all of that. So we're, we're planning on doing kind of two mail outs to contact these landowners. The first one will be to the folks that are directly affected by the zoning changes. And that we plan to do as soon as we have the next work session scheduled. And following that work session, if the Planning Commission wishes to set a public hearing, then we will plan to do a mail out to all of the properties, again, affected by those zones and then within 300 feet or 500 feet, depending on whether they're in the UGA or outside of the UGA. And that will go, we'll, we'll aim to get that out at least 20 days in advance of the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a thought on when we're going to be doing the, the next joint session?
Yeah, so we didn't receive responses from everyone, but we did receive enough responses from both Planning Commissions so that we would have a quorum. So I'm actually going to send an email during this meeting a little bit later to confirm with Polly and get those dates scheduled. It's looking like April 15th will be the next joint session. That's next Thursday. And that will be, again, just a, a joint planning dedicated work session. So we will just be talking about the joint plan again. And tentatively, the public hearing date that we will have on the agenda for the Planning Commission to set if they so wish to will be May 20.
So you're just going to confirm with Tom Water and then we're going to go from there?
Correct.
Is that kind of for the five of us here, does it seem good for you guys?
I didn't understand the question. Could you ask that again?
I'm just asking the Commissioners if that on Thursday.
I already did my taxes.
Well, thanks for, thanks for paying for all that service. Okay, so none here and any objections? Less, uh, was kind of, Ed, you just came on. You got some?
Well, no, no, just your taxes aren't due till May this year, but.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Such a good citizen, though. He's just wanting to be ahead of the game.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're going to pay a time.
Wants to pay his fair share, I'm sure.
Have we gotten much public comment on this Tom Water UGA joint plan yet?
I, I haven't gotten hardly any comment on it at this time. We're, we're really counting on the notices to, to alert the, the property owners and the people in the surrounding areas to have an opportunity to make comments.
Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, so it looks like the next Thursday will be good, at least for the five of us, and we'll try to make sure that everybody else gets that notice too. Or we will, or I shouldn't say we, Polly will. So. If there's no other questions for these two, then we're going to move to our work session on the, back to the shorelines.
Okay, great. Good evening Commissioners. Andrew Defobus, Community Planning. So tonight, we'll continue with our review of the Shoreline Master Program document. Get back into Chapter 19600 where we last left off. Where I am looking for specific amendments that the Planning Commission wishes to make to that, that draft, which will then promulgate the public hearing draft or any options that you want in there for the public to consider or things for them to be aware of. We did get one written comment, which was forwarded to the Planning Commission today and posted online as well. And I do have, before we jump into the document, I have a couple of follow up items, things you've asked me for in the past. So there were questions about the definition of critical saltwater habitat. So the Shoreline Management Act defines both critical saltwater and critical freshwater habitat and included amongst the, the definition of critical saltwater habitat is a mention of eelgrass beds. The question was, does that include both native and non-native eelgrass beds? Because Puget Sound has both of those types of plants. And I followed up with ecology and it looks like sometime back around 2010, the Department of Fish and Wildlife excluded non-native eelgrass from the definition of critical saltwater habitat. So it doesn't say that in the wax, but if you go down the rabbit hole and look at the priority habitats and species list, it exclusively does not reference it. There's several footnotes in there saying anywhere eelgrass beds are mentioned, it says this does not include Japonica. So, you know, that is, that's all fine and good for the rabbit trail of crumbs that I follow, but that brings back the question to Planning Commission, whether there is a desire to somehow commemorate that in the draft. And I was thinking perhaps somewhere along the lines, if you, if you wanted to, putting something in the definition that just states that, you know, this definition does not, as of this date, does not include non-native eelgrass or something like that, so that it, you know, if it changes in the future, you know, we wouldn't be locked into it, but just make reference to that. So if that question comes up a year from now and I'm not around or don't remember that we have the answer to that.
If, if that's an easy add, Andy, that would be great.
I think so. I don't have a problem with that. Again, that's one of those things that it's a reasonable question that someone else may ask, and if we can easily answer it and avoid confusion when implementing the document, I, I'm good with that. So I will make a note to do that.
Is there a, a read? Do we know that non-native eelgrass is not good?
I don't know. I don't know enough on that topic to really say, and I've kind of heard it explained both ways. You know, it is, it is not a native plant, but it also at least provides some function that, you know, some habitat function, but it's not the native plant that, that is, you know, specifically accustomed and acclimatized to this area. But I'm not sure. So I just know that they are not considering it part of critical habitat. You know, but that, that's all that I was able to find thus far.
I want to think that I read that it was actually classified as a noxious weed.
Okay, if that's so, then that, that could explain why it was taken out. I don't know, I just don't know off the top of my head if it is or not. Yeah, so I'm sorry, I don't have more information on that. The next piece is, so just, just as a little update, so there have been questions from the Planning Commission, there have been questions from the public about the letter of exemption that is referenced in the SMP and what that means. So the letter of exemption is sort of a non, it's a non-permit, right? So there are different permits that the SMP will employ, and then there are exemptions from permits that are specifically called out by state law that are referenced in that, in that document. And a letter of exemption is something that a landowner would receive when their activity is categorically exempt from a permit under the SMP. That is different from, say, just someone doing an activity that doesn't reach the threshold of being even acknowledged or covered by the SMP. And so I talked to ecology about that. And Sarah's guidance to me was, you know, work with current planning, try to make it clear in the draft what rises to the threshold of permit, permanent activity, what is below that threshold, and then also that goes hand in hand with putting that same information in our public outreach materials. So the fact sheets and things like that that we're developing, there is one on permitting that we're planning to release for the open house. And so I think that would be good information to put in there if there are things that we know people want to do on the property, but they don't need permits for. But it is not intended that, that, you know, if you're replacing a board on your dock, it's not intended that you would need to get a letter of exemption. It's not, it's not for, for that. So I think there's some additional clarity that we can put in the document and in some of our educational materials to try to, to highlight that fact. And so that's on my list to do. And when current planning sees this, this draft again, to work with them on the types of things that they hear from people about wanting to build or do on the shoreline that aren't technically permitted. You know, can we provide off-ramps or just basically let people know what to expect? So that's very much on my radar. I wanted to give you an update on that.
Andy, are we expecting that this fact sheet, is this going to be something similar to like the pamphlet that we talked about? Will it be ready to go at the same time we are adopting? Or is this something that you plan on finishing up after SMP is adopted?
So the fact, we have fact sheets on several different materials that we're preparing as part of the open house. And, and so those will all be released with the, when the open house goes online, the virtual open house. And the plan that we've talked about as staff is to use those materials as the basis of that pamphlet. So, you know, that can sort of be the backbone, because they cover a variety of topics that people are really interested in. Buffers and, you know, legally existing homes and all those sorts of things. So that people are going to want to know about. And, you know, the permit sheet will have things about, you know, what does and does not require a permit. So these are sort of the things that we've all talked about in terms of, you know, putting together educational materials. So that's the plan right now is to adapt those fact sheets or have them serve as the basis of that and then supplement them where needed. So those will be ready to go during the open house period, and then we'll continue to build on them over time. And, and, you know, they'll sort of evolve as, as the questions people are asking evolve or the informational needs change. So that is the plan. So as we hear things, you know, I, my mind's always worrying with, well, that would make a great frequently asked question. I may have heard it once, but it's, it's going to get asked more frequently. So that's, that's definitely on our radar as, as I'm hearing public and as I hear Planning Commission talk about things, you know, we're thinking of ways to flesh out those materials to, to, you know, connect people with information. So that being said, I'll jump into the document where we left off and then just my last update before I set you loose. Okay, hopefully you are now seeing the document. So just a clarification on public access. So this was another thing that, that we talked about a few Planning Commission meetings ago. And so I did circle back with ecology on this. The question specifically was if a development is of the size that it is going to require public access and for residential development, that is defined as five or more lots, public access is required by state law. The question is, who is the public in that sense? Is it going to be, is it limited to members of the community or the HOA? Is it public access and everybody gets to come? What is, you know, what's the answer there? And as, as with many things on the shoreline, it is not a simple cut and dry, you know, it's community or it's general public access. So in some cases, community access could be appropriate, but in other cases, you know, broad public access may be more appropriate. And really what it comes down to is like the nexus and proportionality, like the, you know, the case law on those sorts of things. So the, the public access you're providing should be commensurate with the level of impact the development is having or the impact that it's having to, to any existing public access. And, you know, it should be scalable, right? It should scale with the development. Public access may look different on a subdivision with five lots versus one with 500 lots. And it can also take many forms. Public access could be, depending on the, you know, the layout of the land and the type of development, it could be a trail, it could be a platform, it could be a swim beach or boating facilities or something like that. It could be a number of different things. So really, I can try to develop some standards for the Planning Commission on this issue because the, the draft does talk about, it has standards for if you're doing recreational development, this is what it needs to look like or should look like. These are the things that, that we need to know. But it doesn't have any sort of threshold for community versus general public access. And when I talked to Sarah Castle at Ecology about that, she thought that a good approach would be, you know, that, that the Planning Commissioners, you, you all can, can create something or you can propose some sort of delineation there where maybe it's appropriate for one type of access versus the other. You know, we can put something in the draft and just see, you know, how the public reacts to that. And then, you know, see what ecology thinks about that. But really, absent that, I mean, there's, there's no guidance in there now. So it's kind of going to be left up to the staff, you know, to determine what type of access is going to be appropriate. And given the conversations that we have had here in this forum, I, I would suspect that you all would like an opportunity to maybe provide some more guidance on that. So that could either be something that we talk about now as we look at this section or, you know, when this comes back, when I've got all your stuff in here and we're down to those just last few remaining punch list items, you know, we could tackle it then. So I'm, I'm open to what, what you guys think, because I'm kind of springing this on you right now. But I'll, I'll let you tell me what you think about that.
I think we should tackle it now so that when you, we come back with the next, this there's something
Yeah. That makes
In the past, you know, development of houses, community property, public access should just be the owners and guests of those households that own those properties, not the general public.
And are you, and are you putting a, drawing a line between smaller versus larger? I, I couldn't hear everything. I think you broke up a little bit.
Any, any, anything that's four or more, I mean, more than four is development. And that's when that criteria kicks in, public access. And so what I'm saying is that if it is a development, you know, as we all know, a development, 10 houses, 20 houses, 50 houses, 100 houses with community property that has access to the, to the shoreline, whatever that might be, public access should be defined as the owners of those parcels or the, you know, their guests have to write that in, but the home association and those members.
Doug, if, if you don't mind, I, I had a different delineation that I think kind of matches up with yours. But I think that when we're looking at the, you know, if we're going to have this parsed out, I think that if it's a residential development, that the requirements that the developer only allow access to those residents is appropriate. But if the development is commercial, then that might be more negotiable on whether or not it could be available to the general public or not. But for residential developments, I think that, that allowing that landowner to limit it just to their residence is appropriate.
That's, that's essentially what I was saying, anyway.
Okay. I, I took a look at the handbook chapter today and the wax, just kind of see what they say. And I, I can't, I can't guarantee that that approach will be successful. But if that is what the Planning Commission wants to, to suit for, I mean, I, that, I'm, I'm taking your direction to incorporate your, your vision here. And, you know, it sounds like, again, with a lot of things, there is not, there's not always a hard number or a hard requirement to point to to say it has to look like this, right? And if you look at different SMPs, they're going to address it differently. I do know that according to the handbook and talking about public doctrine, you know, the shorelines, the, the water, waters of the state are, belong to everybody, right? The land underneath, even if it's privately owned, the waters of the state belong to all. And the ownership of private property does not negate that part of the public doctrine. And so that piece, that may create some headwinds for this concept that all residential development, you know, would only be, the only access would be provided to the community members. But I mean, it's a place to start from, because right now the draft doesn't say anything about it. So, you know, it's, it's a place to start from. One thought that comes to mind is whether if there is historic access that is being supplanted by the new development, that may also be another case where there's an issue where, you know, we all know places where you can just kind of park your car on the wide spot of the road and like go through the bushes and get in the lake or the river. It's been there forever. But, you know, if that is, becomes part of a development, even though it's private property and privately owned, if there is historic unofficial access to it, that could present challenges to that approach. But, you know, I would turn it over to the, the group, and if, if that's the direction that you want me to take this in, I can, you know, try to draft something up. It'll be in the next version of the draft that you look at and then it'll go to, it'll go to ecology, it'll go far and wide with the, you know, public, and we'll see where it lands.
Kind of believe that what Andrew was just saying about historic pieces, access to the property. I think it all depends for me is like how big is the development? If it's a large development and it's cutting off all public access, maybe it runs up against a natural designation on both sides or something. So it's excluding the public. Now I think there's a problem. Does, so do. I guess I'm saying this is more of a case by case kind of a deal where, okay, so somewhere along the edge there, they have to have some kind of access to this lake, independent on how large it is or whatever. But it seems to me that there are going to be times when these developments or communities have to have some kind of public access.
Jim, if Andrew did make a carve out for historic access, unofficial access, would that be good enough?
I, it would definitely be helpful, yeah. I think you're going to need, people are going to come there. Are they going to walk through? Well, I guess Well, I guess it wouldn't be walking through people's yard, but I mean, they're going to be denied access to this place that they've had for years.
There would have to be some kind of notification or somebody would have to make the claim before the development started that, hey, there is a historic, uh, historic access here that we are now going to eliminate. And is there a way to challenge that or a way to lay that claim?
That, that piece I don't, I don't know. Eric, I mean, I, I gotta, I have, I guess I have a little bit of problem with that, that nobody knows that process. And then all of a sudden it's gone because there's a row of houses in front of it and then they show up in, you know, in June and it's gone.
I don't think we're going to start doing like historic access easements that are tied to deeds or anything like that. I don't know how you do anything like that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know either, but to exclude the public when they've been using this already, doesn't seem fair to me.
I think you're, but you're, uh, one of the, we just talked about in the last topic about the, you know, notice to the public being the thing that generates the interest. I think when the surrounding landowners get, uh, a letter in the mail that says there is a subdivision proposal within 300 feet of your property. If they know that they've been, I've been walking through that field and fishing there for 20 years, you know, at the lake, they're going to be the ones that are going to, let us know that, right? That there is some sort of historic access piece. And so I wasn't necessarily thinking along the lines of, uh, anything, you know, putting that as on the planners to, you know, research that or investigate that, but just making it a, a consideration that if, if this comes to light, if, if, if we are aware of this, that there is some sort of historic access, you know, that could potentially be another consideration.
Well, Andy, I think we're also thinking that this would be in anything that's a fairly large development, which is probably going to hit a hearing examiner anyways, wouldn't it? And that would be an issue that would come up in the hearing examiners, um, hearing exam if, if there was a historic access issue, wouldn't it?
Potentially it could. Yeah. And that's going to depend on, I'm not quite sure what some of the other titles of the Thurston County code say about hearing examiner review, but that will somewhat depend on where we land in this document or you land in terms of what, what we're going to require there. Uh, I think, and if I can move faces here, I can look at the draft. I'm not sure that for residential development, if we, if the planning commission made any changes to that, you know, changing it back to, uh, administrative access. I can go look or we can look when we get there. Um, okay. Well.
That we would allow, you know, a hundred unit development on a lake that did not go to a hearing examiner. I, I don't know.
And it looks like it potentially depending on the set, it might be full, the full hearing examiner. So I think that is certainly something they, they could look at. But there's just, and that's the thing there, right now there are no, there's no considerations in the draft that, that say, uh, it's going to go one way versus the other. So, you know, Jim touched on another good point about the configuration of the, the, of the subdivision. And that's a thought that I had, you know, what if it's, what if you only have five lots that back up to the water or, and it is a 500 lot subdivision? Or it's, it's 10 lots, but every single one is on the water and it takes out an entire, you know, side of a lake or, you know, portion of a stream. So I think there's just different considerations, um, that bear, bear thought by the planning commission. And then, you know, if, if general public access were going to be, uh, allowed, or even if it's just community access, it would have to be, some sort of easement or some sort of dedication on the plat. So there would be some legal nexus to that, that in the future people could point to and say, this is a defined access. Even if, you know, the signs get kicked down or something like that, it still will always exist legally.
Well, I would still, I would still, you know, have deference to leaving residential development or residential access only. Uh, but if there is a historic access issue to take that into consideration, and I think that, you know, since this is all, this is all rural Thurston County, unincorporated Thurston County, that the chances that a huge, you know, a huge development that's going in on, on a body of water are pretty slim anyways. So I don't, I don't know if it's actually going to be a big issue or not, but I, I, I think we made that carve out for, and a historic access, a general, general population, historic access that, that carve out was there, I'd be okay with it. But other than that, I'd really prefer to leave it that the developer can lock it down just for the residents of his development.
Yeah. Um.
I guess I also have a problem with legitimizing squatters and trespassers.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
You know, if it, if it is a legitimate historical granted access, but if people have just been walking through somebody's farm to get to, the lake and fishing and whatnot, I consider that trespassing.
And I. Yeah, I, I hear that. Um, I just know, again, based on my reading of the handbook and the wax, I don't know that, you know, we're all trying to create a document here that's going to work and, you know, potentially it's not going to get us challenged somewhere down the line. So I can't guarantee that, that the law, you know, the case law would agree with that sentiment, but it is something we can, we can shoot for, right? I can run it up the chain or at least get it in the draft and, you know, at, at appropriate checkpoints between now and this thing getting approved. And we can run that language by, uh, the folks who would know. So.
Hey, Andrew. Hi, this is Raul here. I feel your consternation and also that of the rest of the gang here. But here's the bottom line. If the development is going to limit all access to that lake, then I think it would come into play where we have to put something in the wording there besides just the people involved in the development. Because there's always going to be somebody who's going to be complaining, oh, well, you know, I thought about going there, but I never used to, but now I want that access. Just when there's a development happening, happening. The bottom line is, again, if it is something that's going to limit all access to that lake or shoreline, I can see where we need to expand beyond just the residences of the residents of the development. You see what I'm getting at? Because if they can go from here and go over there and still access the lake and still put a fishing boat there or, or go on and hunt for bullfrogs, it really doesn't impact anything. Just have to move next door. Because if you were going to build one development here, one house, and then another person was going to build another house another time, six months later, and another person, you know, and so on. And you have six people that have developed the property, that person would eventually have to move somewhere else in the lake to access the lake. See what I'm getting at? I think we can probably come up with some language that actually works on those guidelines. Because now here you go with the big development that is going to limit all access to the lake, that any reasonable person know, crap, this really changed the way it used to be. Well, yeah, you definitely want to protect some access to that natural resource that is open to everybody else. But that doesn't mean that the whole shoreline has to be open to everyone. Just to have some area where they're going to still access and benefit from that lake. Hopefully I didn't make it confusing, but I usually do. Thanks.
Any other thought to just piggyback on that, um, you know, and it is also possible to, for, so when a planner is applying these rules and looking to see what makes sense, you know, kind of zooming out and looking at a broader scale and trying to figure out where, where does the site sit in context with other existing public access on the same body of water? You know, if you're developing a big piece of land that's right next to a DFW boat launch, and that's already open to the public and is providing access, maybe that looks different. I don't know. Just food for thought.
Andrew, do we have any bodies of water that don't have public access? That are covered by SMP?
Potentially. There are some, some of those smaller lakes, um, that are, you know, they are of the right size, but are not necessarily well trafficked. Um, it is possible. I'd have to go back and look at the identification because that document tells, to note the public access, um, that's available on different bodies of water. I think about like Begalow Lake in Northeast Olympia or outside Northeast Olympia. I'm not aware if there's any public facilities there or like Pittman Lake, which is, um, down in the, more in the central county, um, and it's surround, it's, you know, private, lots all around it, uh, with a big wetland all around it. I don't know that those have any sort of established general public access. And I think our rivers, they do in places, but you know, how far and wide those are spread out, I'm not entirely sure.
So do we have any idea, like I, I, first of all, I agree with Eric there. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of land left around lakes where you're going to have a large community built. So I guess my question is, first of all, are there any kind of mapping that shows where that may happen? And we got, you know, single family homes, if somebody's building two single family homes, I, I don't expect that to have any public access. And even up to half a dozen or something, uh, because I don't want, you know, I don't expect people to kind of be going through somebody else's lots. But, uh, I guess if it's a large enough community, it's if, or if there's an option, you know, somewhere that there's a boat ramp and a little play area down the road, I'm, I'm definitely fine with that, that the builder wouldn't have to do anything. Going back to my original question, do we have any idea what, what is available out there to build?
Is there any high density undeveloped or high density zone developed land on any of the SMP jurisdiction?
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah. Uh, and I haven't looked at that specifically. Um, I, so I'm not sure, but I mean, there are some, lammards that exist throughout the county, right? But it's not like it's the same as, um, the urban zoning, right? Um, I wonder if any of the, in the north county, if any of the lakes that are in the UGAs potentially have more, uh, zones that would permit higher density around them versus the rural county, which does not pick up UGAs and for the smaller cities, don't pick up the, the city zoning. So it's possible in that case. But I'm not sure. I just know, and again, you know, there's just, there's an absence of, of information right now that would, that would say one way or the other. So just trying to set some sort of standards would be, would be useful. And, and Jim, to your point, um, it is, it's, it's five or more lots. So if you subdivide, you're only doing four lots, there are no public access requirements. It's five lots and up. And again, it's, it's up to the planning, at this point, it's up to the planning commission to, um, you know, write what that looks like, whether it's going to be community versus, versus public access, general public.
So is everybody somewhat comfortable with the idea of, um, having to prove that there's a historical easement on there to facilitate public access? Or do we want to expand that or?
Well, I think it only if it's going to be some huge, large development that, um, you know, would take away any other opportunities for people. If somebody is just going to build their five houses, I don't think that all of a sudden we need to respect that particular.
I agree.
Well, yeah. What are you talking, let me, it's just a question you talk about, if, if there's an actual historical easement there, then there's an historical easement there and it's, and it's there and it has to be respected. But I think a lot of what we're talking about is a really historical easements, but just been, people trespassing across private property, undeveloped property to get to the lake.
I, I think Andy's saying, or what the suggestion was that these, these weren't actually easements. They're not recorded easements and they are not even any kind of something that could be formalized. It's just places where people have trespassed so often that it's never gone challenged.
Yeah. Or, you know, you never know, it's, it's informal access and everyone knows that landowner doesn't care. They invite people to come on or whatever. I think you're going to see it, that there's different scenarios that could be, that, that could be there. And so again, I'm not, I, I just am not confident that, you know, completely cutting it out, um, and saying, nope, that's, you know, if it's not something that's officially recorded somewhere, um, you know, we're not going to make provisions for the general public who's been using it. I just don't, I, I can't guarantee that's going to be successful, um, just based on what I've looked at. But, you know, it, it's if, it kind of where I left it with ecology was, you know, because we don't have, we don't have anything in here to that, respect, you know, the gathered planning commission thoughts, draft something up and, you know, basically make a proposal, right? Propose something and, and see how it looks.
So Andy, a definition, if you have a, let's say a parcel, it's 200 feet of shoreline. And then more than 250 feet back, there's a, there's a farm that now become, gets developed into a housing development of a hundred, houses, all of which have owned that 200 foot parcel on the beach for community property. Does that qualify under this five or more, or is it not? Because all the houses are outside of the 200 foot SMP.
And are you saying, so if I understand that correctly, so it's a big parcel and all of the, uh, all of the homes are constructed outside of shoreline jurisdiction, but essentially the, the strip of land that's within shoreline jurisdiction becomes its own sort of resource parcel?
Right. A park for those people.
Right. Like an HOA park.
Yeah. I, I would have to research that to be a hundred percent sure, but my first thought is that, in reading the wax, I mean, that is not a subdivision, that specific area that's subject to shoreline jurisdiction would not be subdivided into more than five lots. So perhaps it would not be, it would not trigger those requirements, but I don't know if there's, and I didn't see anything in the fine print that said something like, you know, it, or if the parcel, parcel within shoreline jurisdiction becomes, you know, subject to, uh, access for community outside of it. I didn't see anything that would make that requirement, but, um, I could look.
Definition. So the people aren't, because I'm, part of my thought process was that qualified under this, um, section. But then I thought, after I thought of it more, well, they're not, none of houses are actually in the jury.
Right. And it would be, yeah, it'd be interesting. Uh, and I don't know whether there would be a difference. If, if there would be a difference in the fact that that strip of land was, you know, became part of the development as a tract versus, you know, when they did the subdivision, they simply just left that big strip out of it and it's in, under some other ownership, right? That, that could potentially be the difference because where you're not necessarily dividing, you're not taking that, that parcel and, um, you know, dividing it. So it's going to, all the piece of shoreline jurisdiction would be still one parcel. It is, you know, counterpart to all those other lots that are created and potentially has restrictions on it. So I, I don't know whether that would trigger it or not. But, you know, it, on its face would not seem like it would, but I would want to research that before I could be more confident in that.
I, I don't mean to get too far in the woods here, but I think we actually have a, a example of where this might happen. Uh, down there on the Deschutes River, there's that Deschutes River Ranch, which is about 20 or 25 acres of land and, uh, somewhere between a quarter and a half mile of Deschutes River. And if that property and that property owner lets people use that property all the time, if that property owner decided that he had a change in plans and wanted to develop his land, he potentially would be required to continue to allow, to continue to allow access to the general public, even if he took his 25 acres and busted it down into five acre lots and only built five homes. Is that correct?
Uh, that's, so again, that, there's no, there's no state law.
There, it's not sandstone. I understand that, but that, that's potentially one of the hazards we'd hit.
Yeah, it's one of the hazards, I think, because looking at the handbook, it talks about the, the level of public access to be provided should be commensurate with the, the, the public access that's being impacted by the development. Um, and so I just, I, I wish there was, was more definitive guidelines as to, you know, where to guide you here, but, you know. And so when we come back and look at this, um, I don't know if it's a memo or something like that, or even just an email to planning commissioners where I can point you to the pieces of the whack and the handbook that talk about it. There's things that say, you know, jurisdictions should be looking at these things and public access is not required in the following scenarios. So there's some, some language to look at, uh, maybe before we come back and, you know, run through this all again.
So Eric, can I back you up a sec? Uh, so if, am I hearing you, like in, in your example, if he wanted to leave that public access as the owner, that should be prohibited or? Cause I'm not quite.
I guess I don't know where I land on this. It's just a question that I think we're facing right now and, and I'm not sure what the right, I'm not sure where the right area is to land on this one just yet in a case like that.
Yeah. But I, I guess for me, it's like a private property. If he's, if he's willing to do that, then I don't see any harm in it.
No, I think that he should still be allowed to let private, you know, general public on his property if he wants. I don't want to put restrictions on him about that, but if all of a sudden he wanted to not allow the general public property anymore, we, this might prohibit, prohibit him from doing that. He might not be able to lock his property down at some point then.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense. I, I.
I can't say for sure, and I can also say, one of the general guiding principles in the handbook talks about, you know, it, the, the water, the water and the shorelines belong to the public, but we are to balance that with protection of the environment and protection of private property rights. So all these things are supposed to magically be balanced, uh, and that, that, that falls on you, right? And, and for me to listen and guide as best I can.
So that just points out that we need to take a stand on it, one way or the other, so that it's in the document.
Right.
The way we would like it, but, but even if it isn't, so that people can give public comment. Find out.
That's kind of where I'm at right now is, you know, that's what was my goal tonight, to bring that back and get your initial, take a temperature on that and try to spin something up. But you know, this is certainly something that we'll be interested in hearing from the public on and, and I'll be interested to see what ecology is once I have something.
Andrew, if we have to have a starting place, it wouldn't hurt my feelings if that starting place was where it residential development is left for the residents only unless there is a historic access. And then if we need to modify from that position, I'm, I'm very willing to have that conversation, but I think as a starting point, that would be a good place.
I, I would agree with that as well, this is Raul. Here's a, a different point, let's take that farm or that piece of property there next to the Schutz River. Let's say that was my property and I never allowed anyone except for myself to be there for the last 40 years. Now all of a sudden I want to build five homes there, then I have to provide a public access? Well, the public has never had access to it. What the heck is this? Now all of a sudden you have providing a benefit that the public has never had. Because otherwise they would have had to trespass my land, I would have been calling the sheriff's deputies about that. And I, and I agree with Eric, what I'm saying, the bottom line is, we need to weigh whether, whether there has been some historical use of it. Otherwise it's limited alone to the property owners. Because if I develop that land and I turn it into five or six lots or whatever, nobody had access to that land before for the last 40 years, so why now? Get my point?
I, I do, and so I think that could potentially, so the, the, to take that point and extrapolate it further, that scenario that you highlight could be an example where community access is more appropriate. Because state law says if it's four, if it's more than four lots, you gotta do something, you gotta have some sort of public access, period. Uh, but in that case, maybe it is just a trail down to the water that is only usable by the members of that community. It, you know, because no one else has ever been. Yeah.
Exactly, we're still coming to access, doesn't mean there has to be community, a large access, which is where this is actually going. And then let's look at Capital Lake and what's happening over there, okay? Come on, that's for you, that's, I guess, public access, is that really what we want?
So, and the way that um, Eric summed it up, I think that's kind of how I captured things. That seems to be the direction from planning commission. So what I will look at is um, for residential, um, essentially for residential development. That public access, you know, would be defined as the landowners within that area and their guests. And we may have to come back and look at some, you know, you, you can put some more development standards around that then, right? About, you know, signage or hours or whatever, those sorts of things that will make happy neighbors, right? Uh, and then, uh, but commercial would be public. So if it's commercial development, that would be a case where potentially there's more broad public access. Uh, and, and then, you know, the historical access piece for the residential. So unless there's some sort of historical access, that should be taken into consideration. And so I'll see where that all lands, you know, after I wake up tomorrow and make sense of it. But that's kind of the direction I'm taking now to go back and work on that. And so that will just be um, something that you see, that we see here in the, uh, that will get added to the development standards essentially.
Good starting point.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Gravy, okay, so great, with that in mind, um, so we've thought through, the, knowing that some of that work is yet to be done. We can work through the draft, um, and maybe, maybe some of that will trigger uh, on that. But yeah, we can get rolling. Uh, Rel, did you have something else?
That was excellent, um, I think you're ahead of the right direction.
Great, I thought I, thought I would do. Asking, okay, so that being said, um, I, I'm ready to, to go here if you are. So uh, does anyone have any thoughts, questions, comments, remarks on um, letter A here under recreation and public access? If not, I'm gonna keep going. And again, I did, uh, if there were comments or changes that the planning commission proposed to the permitting scheme uh, up in the table, I migrated them down to, to below, so there, I don't think there were any for the recreation section. But as we keep moving through, you may see notes that just say, make this administrative or what have you. So, okay, I'm gonna start scrolling and pause here on the development standards. Does anyone have anything in letter C, development standards? And I'll scroll. Okay. So if not, and again, knowing we're gonna come back and I'll have some more pieces about uh, what the development needs to look like or who's gonna have access, then we can move on for now. Um, so we'll, we'll jump into residential development. And here's an area where I noted, uh, again, the planning commission had proposed to split out accessory dwelling units. So that's something I'm working on researching and running to ground. Um, have some initial promising thoughts on that, that that's something that we should be able to accomplish here. Um, so are there any questions or anything on uh, the permit requirements for residential development?
I just want to look and see what your notes are.
Oh, sure, and I can't tell if you're, if I'm blocking your.
Looking at the cup for primary, single family residence.
Right, so, okay, yeah, so uh, thank you for that. Let me zoom out just one piece here. So, okay, when I was looking at this document, I did notice that uh, for the natural environment, the table up above, the land use table says that it's an administrative conditional use permit for um, single family residences in the natural shoreline environment. And this says conditional use permit, it doesn't say administrative. So it's just inconsistency internally in the document. Uh, and I'm happy to hear if the planning commission has thoughts as to which it should be, because up above, there was no, it was left as administrative up above the last we looked at it in the table, so I'm not sure.
My question here is, is what's the rationale for requiring ecology to get involved in this?
So that is a state law. In the natural, natural environment, uh, residential development is a. Yeah, but again, that is the, the, how that permit is reviewed locally is up to you guys. So again, the table says administrative, the text down here says full conditional use permit. So I'm curious if there are thoughts as to which is most appropriate, what direction you'd like it to go.
Well, an administrative cup means that there's no hearing examiner, but it, the county makes a decision and then gets um, passes it by ecology. And if they don't have any objections, then it's okay, right?
Uh, so conditional use permit is approved by ecology. So the, we, the county would approve it, right? The county would, would make an approval, whether that's the hearing examiner or staff, whichever way we write this. But that conditional use permit does not become, um, it does not take effect until ecology actually approves it. Right, which may be what you, what you said, yeah, uh, they have to approve it, they have final approval.
We don't need a hearing.
Um, okay, so what do other folks think, is that, should I make that change?
Well, it says table states administrative cup.
Right, so I'm saying, the table says one thing, the text down here says the other. I just need to know which way to go and edit whichever side.
I'm fine with administrative.
Yeah.
Up, all the way through.
Okay, uh, looking at Jim and Ed and maybe, Rel, do you have any thoughts on that or should I go ahead and make that?
It's still, even if it's an administrative, it's still going to, he calls you, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay.
No, you're fine, Andrew.
Great, so I will, let me make a note.
Taking care of in the last.
Sorry, Doug, I, I missed that.
Under uh, A here, 1A.
Uh huh.
We changed that cup to administrative, but for primary, single family residences and subdivisions. What does subdivisions mean?
Um, subdivision of land, so it's, I, I think it's just a general, um, a general reference to the word subdivision.
Well, is there, is there a, a unit number, like is that the five or more or?
I don't think so. I think that's saying if you are putting a single family home there or you are subdividing property, period. Um, that it would be a conditional use. And I'd have to go and look to see if subdivisions, um, if that stems from state law as well. I'm not sure.
Using to me, I think it implies something that we're not, I think if it's multiple houses, five or more in a subdivision, that's where you need a little more control, then, then you do need public hearings.
Mm-hmm, and that may, yeah, sure, I mean that, uh, so I can write in here that uh, change to administrative cup uh, for single family residences. And if, yeah, I mean, if, if you want, if you would prefer to see more review for more homes, you know, more lots. I mean, that's certainly something that you could, you could do here. So is that, is that what folks are wanting me to do?
That's what I think we should do, but, but I'm just one person.
I agree with that, but I think you need more review if you're gonna get up there in the five, over five.
Well, I think.
And public input in that, at that point too, wouldn't.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if the, the SMP defines subdivision, um, or not. But I mean, it's not like it's a short platter, you know, long platter, uh, large lot or anything like that. It just says subdivision, which to me is, you know, if you turn one parcel into two, that is a subdivision. So that's what I think this is, as written, you know, if, if we, if that's what the planning commission puts here, unless you put a specific number of units on it to make that threshold, it would be, if you're creating more than one lot, you know, that would be a conditional use permit.
So can we, can we just get clarification then on what a subdivision is?
Yeah.
Rules?
Okay, yep.
I think that would help if we do many units that.
I will verify, I, my, my gut is that it just means more than, you know, essentially creating more than one parcel. But I will, I will run that to ground, um, absolutely. Okay, uh, so I did make some notes down here in number two and three here, just to say that it doesn't say single family residence, uh, it doesn't carve it out, so I just, I'm gonna add that in there just to, to avoid confusion. I didn't make the change yet because you hadn't seen it, but you know, eh, letter B in both of these talk about multifamily units, subdivisions, accessory dwelling units, but don't talk about single family homes. So obviously that belongs in letter A, but doesn't say it, so I will make those changes.
And then you're using different sentences in the, different ones. So subdivisions is in B and two, it's two B, but it's one A, so.
Right, so that's because, I mean, as this draft was previously written, for the natural environment, subdivisions were put up there with um, uh, with single family residences and everything else was actually prohibited. So in the rural conservancy, urban conservancy and the shoreline residential environments, there, they, this lumps together everything but single family residences. So there's, you know, essentially there's four different types of residential development that are included here in this whole section at large. Um, and it's just how are they grouped depending on which said that for shoreline environment designation you're in.
And these ought to be administrative also, as Eric said, in the whole section.
So, okay, so again, that's, okay, so, and let's maybe work backwards, so, so I just heard potentially planning commission say in the natural environment, um, that a subdivision might take a full cup uh, as written in the shoreline residential environment designation, it's a, it's an SDP. So I would, I would ask, you know, you're saying for the rural conservancy and the urban conservancy environment, essentially, go ahead and do an administrative cup for multifamily, for accessory dwelling units and subdivisions?
I, I, I don't want to see a cup for ADUs.
I, and I apologize for that, yes, the ADUs I think are gonna get moved up with single family, that's the thing I'm working on. So, sorry about that, those should move. I think the question is more, you know, we talked about natural a little bit and I'll bring you some more information about that. But the question would be, in the rural conservancy and urban conservancy environment, um, what is an appropriate level of review for multifamily and subdivisions? And again, I don't know how much multifamily we get out there, but you know, it's, it's here, so.
Single families should be administrative.
Okay, oh, okay, so uh, okay, so, right here, administrative SDP. Okay. And I, yeah, okay, I can make that change if that's what planning commission wants. I just, again, I, I brought things down from up above and I don't think that there was any at the time when we looked at this a couple of meetings ago. I don't think there was direction on, on that, I could be mistaken.
Multifamily, um, and I guess subdivision divisions as we've, we're looking into the definition of that, those, if they have to be a cup, there should, there should be some public reviews, so it should go to a hearing. Exam or public hearing.
But am I hearing that uh, for single family residential? And I'm guessing in the rural conservancy, in urban conservancy and shoreline residential, you're saying to do those administrative?
Yes.
Okay, great, uh, are other folks okay with that? Okay, then I will do that, let me.
And then if it doesn't have to be a cup, I'd rather see it in SDP.
For uh, here in the rural and urban conservancy? Okay, yeah, I don't know that, um, I'm not aware of any specific whacks that would require those to be a conditional use permit. So potentially that could change to an SDP, uh, I can, I can check that and, and see what other folks think about that. And so that would be, uh, if you, if it's, if it becomes a full SDP, then it would have hearing examiner review for those larger developments versus, okay, that, okay.
I just want to go into ecology if we can, because it's expensive for everybody and unless there's a real valid scientific reason to do it.
Yeah, and they will still get to, even with an SDP, uh, they will still get to review it, so they could still appeal it. But uh, it, it does not hinge on their approval.
Right.
Okay, so that's the proposal would be for a rural conservancy and urban conservancy to change this conditional use permit to a full um, substantial development permit, what do other folks think about that? Or is that something y'all want me to put in? Jim's nodding, Eric, how about you, what do you think?
I'm indifferent.
Okay. Uh, how about Ed and, Ed or Rel, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll do it, uh, and you know, it's other side of planning commission, public hearing, there will be certainly time to discuss. So you may get, you know, more testimony and want to revisit that. Um, so yeah, you'll be able to, okay. Okay, great, um. Okay. So, all right, so moving, whoops. Okay, perfect, I got it, all right, okay, so moving on, we'll, we'll, we'll get into development standards here. And so uh, at the top of this, I just want to point out, many, many meetings ago, back at, uh, I think it was January 6th, um, the planning commission, you guys had a conversation about uh, septic systems or rules for septic systems and whether, you know, you wanted to revisit those or. you know, you wanted to revisit those or talk about those more, and I think at the time I kind of deferred and said, well, when we get to 600 and get into the development standards for residential development, that's when you should have that conversation. So I put a place marker here. If there's anything that you wanted to discuss about septic, as we move through here, I just would tee that up and leave it at that. So any comments on the development standards here for residential development?
What are the current sewage septic regulations for single family shoreline homes, still just a septic system designed appropriately?
Right, and so again, this is another area where, you know, potentially the critical areas ordinance is also going to come into effect, the critical area rules that are wrapped into the SMP. But essentially, it's, you know, you have to comply with the, with the county health code, and there has to be separation between your well and your septic if you're on a well. And you know, there are, you have to be outside of a critical area buffer if there's no other, if there is room outside to do it. So yeah, essentially, it's, it has to be designed correctly by a professional. It has to be cited appropriately. So as it stands, you know, I don't think the SMP is really is not taking, you know, it's not really putting further direction on that. It's just saying, pointing to those other things that already exist in terms of regulating those, those systems. But it's just if, if there's any discussion that needs to happen or that you would like to happen, I mean, this is an opportunity to, to do that, but that's why.
I don't think the SMP is the place for, for worrying about septic systems. I think we, we, there's, the county has all sorts of regulations about septic systems already and those already take into account things like critical areas and wells and that kind of stuff, and I think adding more to the SMP wouldn't actually do anything. I think the only reason to add a prohibition against septic systems within SMP jurisdiction would be to shut down development, and that's not something that I am interested in doing.
Yeah, you know, I just comment, I, I mean, no, you can't, you gotta, there's not sewer, there's not sewage available out there. As far as the septic standards in rural county, it's certainly something the county ought to look at because there's most of the county, there's not that much requirement to, to keep them up to snuff and so on, but I agree. It's not the shoreline act that is not the right place to do that, and the county has to take a broader look at septic.
And this is a good example of, it's a good reminder that, you know, in many ways shorelines is like, it's kind of, it's an overlay, right? Because you have all these other rules that are going to apply no matter what, whether you're in shoreline jurisdiction or not. There are still septic code and all that stuff, you know, there's stormwater requirements, there's impervious surface, all those things don't go away just because you're in shoreline jurisdiction. So, okay, we can move on. I just, you know, I just wanted to flag it because I know that, you know, I, I kind of punted before and, you know, it came time, so here we are. Okay, so I'll move on. Delete that comment. Groovy, okay, so anything else in the development standards for residential development?
Can you explain number nine?
Yeah, um, I may have to go back and research that one to see where that has come from. I wonder if that has to do with, for the purposes of subdividing? You know, and, and you know, saying you're going to create, whether you have the amount of appropriate amount of land to be able to subdivide, or whether you're creating lots that are of adequate size. It's saying that lot area shall only be those lands that are landward of the ordinary high. That's my speculation, but I could look into that.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what it means, then why to put it in the proper words so you understand it?
Did you have any, so again, that's my, that's my interpretation of what I would suspect it means, but did that language, did you have any other questions or comments or thoughts about it? It's, or just want to kind of know what it is?
Well, I don't know what lot area is used for. And as you just described, perhaps, you know, we, we know that there's another section in here that says you can only, you have a lot of, there's a maximum sized lot that you can subdivide to. If that's what that this is for, that's one thing, but if it's for calculating something else, I, I just don't, I don't know because I don't know enough about how lot area is used.
You could do it. You could do a word search for us and find out where it's used.
Yeah.
Because I'm guessing you're right. It sounds like they're not including tidylife. If you own your tidelands and stuff, we're not including that for some purpose, but I agree with Doug. I'm not sure where a lot size, lot area comes in for a calculation, you know?
Yep. I will look at that. That's, like I said, that's just my, my guess is that's what that means, but yeah, let's, I will figure that out and circle back. That should be a pretty easy one, so hopefully I can find that out for you by the next meeting. Okay.
And? I had two questions I wrote down. One is, do we, do we have to say that? Does it have to be included? And the other is that part of it should also be included in aquaculture if we.
And that is, so, so my, my hunch is that this is one of those things that even if you don't include it here, that it still remains a true statement, because this comes from state law. So when they talk about preferred uses of the shoreline, they are only preferred uses if they do not damage the shoreline environment. And so that language does exist up in the aquaculture section, and, and that stems from state law. So I would be fairly confident that that's the same case here. And again, even if, even if you struck it, it's still, it's still a true statement. It would still apply essentially.
I looked at it as thinking, you really need to say it, because of course it does, you know? Good.
I'll confirm that, but again, I know that, that for a fact that that exact language is how they look, how the state looks at preferred use for aquaculture. So I would, you know, it stands to reason that they're going to make that same rationale for other types of development that they're calling preferred uses.
I, it's, I kind of agree with you, Doug, that why does it need to be there? But if it's not there, somebody's going to take advantage of it and say, well, this is where, you know, this is my, I have all this tidelines, that's 50 foot, I can build right up to it. And so I, some type of statement I do believe needs to be in there.
Yeah, and in terms of, you know, control of pollution and prevention of damage to the natural environment, all of the buffers that are adopted in the SMP and the development standards that go along with the development are intended to get it to that point, right? That's where the rubber meets the road and the, the rules that the, that the SMP promulgates, you know, are to intended to do that. So. Okay, I'll, I'll confirm that it, that, yeah, you know, if, if that is in state law or not, but I'm pretty sure it will be. Okay. All right, so moving on, we're starting into shoreline stabilization, so I know this is a big topic. And I, so when we were looking at the table last time, there were no changes made to the permitting regime at that time, but there was a question that came to me. Is the conditional use permit required for shoreline stabilization? And I don't believe that it is. So shoreline stabilization, to back up a little bit, under the state law and the exemptions that are promulgated in state law, a normal protective bulkhead that is typical to protect a single family home is exempt from requiring a shoreline development permit or substantial development permit. But jurisdictions may choose to require a conditional use permit for, for those types of structures. This draft as written does make that choice. And so it is not a requirement, it's not, it's not mandatory from state law, but it is how this draft is currently written. And so I will kick it over to, to you guys with that information.
My preference would be to not require a cup.
I'm on board with Doug with that. They got to go through, yeah. I drop it.
Okay. So would that be? Okay. Okay, so I see a couple of areas that would change on here. So that would be for both, I'm guessing for both the soft and the hard shoreline stabilization, so change essentially remove the permit requirements because there are, you know, there are development standards that are, that are still required to be met. Okay, so how about the rest of planning commission? What do you guys think about that?
Good.
Okay, and Jim, how about you? And Raul?
I'm fine. Go on.
Okay, I know that, you know, many jurisdictions choose to do the conditional use permit just because these are, you know, they have impacts and they're also can be somewhat controversial with neighbors and things like that. But again, that's to my understanding, there's not a requirement, and that was the question I was asked. So let me take a note. Save that? Okay, great. So yeah, so that will have some, some trickle down. Make a note to yeah, I think number, or letter B one here talks about administrative cup and that would, that would change under that scenario, so, okay.
I think, you know, the worst it should be is an SDP, but mostly an administrative SDP.
So again, and so that's, so those exemptions under state law as written in state law are construed narrowly, and so if someone's proposing a bulkhead and it does not meet those, it doesn't meet the exemption criteria, then it's going to require an SDP, and that, that goes without being, without saying, so. And I think the table, in some of the uses in the table, it says that, it says exempt, and then the asterisk, and the asterisk is you're exempt if you meet the exemption criteria. So that's probably what will change for this. Okay.
In the exemptions, it said the bulkhead normal to single family residence is exempt.
Hmm, right.
But.
Essentially, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to daydream and think of what someone would need to propose to have it not be exempt, but it just, it stands to reason if, if, if if the county has cause to say it doesn't meet that, then it would require an SDP. Okay. All right.
Then let's go back on March 3rd about all this stuff, bulkheads and shore meringue and whatnot.
Right.
A lot of state law and what's, whatnot in it. And in reading through that, I can see where we really can interpret some things a different way than they've been interpreted in here.
Okay.
And so you know, I'm thinking we really need to look at this memo and see what state law says. Or would you, we want to go through it in here and then go back and say, oh, but state law says we don't have to do that, or we can also do this.
Right, well, and I'd be curious for your thoughts on that, and I'm, I went back and read over the memo that I wrote up today, and I looked through the, the wax on shoreline stabilization, so hopefully it's all fairly forefront in my mind for this conversation. A lot of what you see in this section is because of how state law is written. So maybe the best approach would be to just look at what's in front of us with the the standards and then, you know, kind of go back to where we need to go back to. But yeah, the memo was written in response to questions that planning commission had about some of the ancillary development and whether stable, shoreline stabilization would ever be authorized to protect, you know, your outhouse, not outhouse, but your outbuildings and your fire pit or something like that, and then questions about whether, you know, the lakes would be different than marine or whether, you know, if there's any question about protecting water quality and, and doing bulkheads, those sorts of things. So that's, that's why I produced the memo, and I think that's, it's intended to be a guide as we work through this, but yeah, I think unless y'all are opposed to it, I would say that we work through the draft. Interested in your thoughts on that?
The draft is pretty specific about you only really can have a bulkhead if it's protecting a primary structure from erosion. You got to prove it. You want to put one in. Where in what you said this, I mean, it talks erosion impacts to property, dwellings and businesses, and there's lots of this where law says proper. And the other part was you, you answered some of the question about eutrophic lakes versus non-eutrophic lakes, but that's just somebody's opinion. And I mean, it's like a white paper that really has no scientific stature, just an opinion.
Well, it was saying that we don't have the, in that specific instance, that we don't have the data to draw conclusions on the contribution of sediment to those eutrophication issues. That's, that's what our county hydrogeologist said, based on everything he knows about all the data that we do have. So it's just saying we can't answer that question is we can't answer that question unfortunately.
Natural life of the lake is to fill in and be a swamp. And I don't think that's in the best interest of the county to have the lakes fill in and be a swamp.
Right, but there, in that specific instance, there are no, there are no provisions in state law that support, that I am aware of that would support that assertion. That may be very well and true, and I absolutely, people who live on lakes and want it to be a lake, that's why they're there, right? And that's why they buy that property. But, you know, I don't, I'm not aware of allowances under state law that would enable construction of a bulkhead, you know, because, simply because there's sloughing of the, of the banks.
But is there anything in state law that says we have to allow a lake to turn into a swamp? So my point is, if we want to make a decision, take a, make a point that it is our, our, our position that we do not want the lakes in Thurston counties to turn into swamps. Therefore, so then we can come up with what we can, what we allow to be done. It's not, it's not excluded. But I think it'd be good stewards of the land, good stewards of our environment. We need, we need to make a decision about this.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate for this forum and for the planning commission to talk about. It's just, you know, my intent in researching all that and putting it in down in writing was what state law would allow or disallow based on that specific argument. And in my research of it, and, you know, it did not appear that there was going to be an allowance in the, in the wax. Specifically for, for, you know, for, for bulkheads for that issue. And again, it goes back to, I would point to, so you talked about the references to property. I, I'm certainly interested in hearing about those or looking at those, but I, when I think of the scenarios where hard stabilization such as a bulkhead is authorized under state law, it's pretty, it's pretty clear, and it talks about to, to protect existing primary structures from from destruction or damage, and it's, you know, you know, not, that's going to happen in 20 years. It's something that's happening, you know, in the next couple of years. And then also to protect new, I think it's new water oriented or non-water oriented development when there is no way to avoid the area that is actively eroding, right? In those cases, if you are able to, you know, can change the configuration of your development such that it's further away, that's what you're supposed to do before any sort of stabilization would be authorized. And then I think the fourth is protecting restoration projects, I think. So that's, I mean, that's kind of what I think of, of, as the, where the rubber meets the road and the, the guidelines are saying these are the scenarios where you can do this. And so I think that's pretty, to me, that's pretty definitive, but I'm certainly interested in your thoughts on that, and that, you know, that's why we're here talking about this section, so.
Well, I find a lot of references in, you did a great job of putting this memo together, by the way, so thank you very much for doing that. But a lot of hard work, research. It's just that there are a lot of references in here that allows protection of use. And allows, you know, lots of things that we're specifically saying no.
Yeah.
And one section allows the justification for bulkheads and limiting native planting. I mean, there's there's all kinds of things in here. I mean, I'd like to go through it. I mean, if, or if everybody else isn't interested, I'll go through it and, and There's all kinds of things in here. I mean, I'd like to go through it. I mean, if or if everybody else isn't interested, I'll go through it and and. Pull out the things that I think make the difference and send them to everybody, but. Bulkheads are important in some environments. And I, I think in a, in a eutrophic lake. We are doing the public, the. Environment and the, and the county that disservice by not trying to preclude our lakes from turning into swamps.
Hmm.
And we're damaging. The shoreline ecological function by doing that. It's going to kill fish, kill the zoe plankton. Do all kinds of damage to that water source.
So again, yeah, and we can, um, I can, I have the memo, so I can pull the memo up if folks want to look at that. Uh, I I just am sharing now. Hopefully you're seeing this, the wax. Um, so you know, the thing that draws the pretty hard line for me uh, is um. Letter B here, essentially that new structural stabilization measures shall not be allowed except when necessary as demonstrated in the following. Manner. And that gets into those limited scenarios that I was talking about the existing primary structures or new development that. Can't avoid anywhere else. Um, and then restoration projects. So um. I don't know. I think. In my opinion, I think that's a pretty fine needle to thread or how whatever the saying is, but um. I don't know. So yeah, I look to.
Uh, I agree. I mean, I I think the uh. I mean, the state standard is is clearly written to pretty much discourage. Unless needed to protect property. And the, the, I mean, I don't really know about the ecological function as you did Doug's raising, but. The state seems to ignore it.
Well, the state talks about um. That. Storage of sediment is a is an ecological function that's explicitly called out by the legislature of lakes. So. They're looking at that as saying, you know, one of the things lakes do is store sediment, you know, it's not going, it's that's not going to the. Furthest extreme of that of and you know, eventually lakes turn into wetlands and turn into forests. I mean, that's just scientific fact. That's what happens in the fullness of time. Uh, their successional environments, they don't, they don't last forever. Uh, but but Doug's to Doug's point, you know, you have people that are living on them that are invested in that and are concerned that that may be happening in that or that the SMP is not allowing for. Perhaps for for protection of that. You know, system as it exists today. It's a, it's a transitional environment. It's, it's going to change and it's, you know, essentially. What can we do or what can this document do to to reverse that? That's kind of, I think, where Doug's coming from.
Before we had people. Lakes and and whatnot could fill in and then you had a flood and it made a new lake. And then you had a river that overflowed at bank and it made a new, new, new river. Things just were fluid and and it happened that way. That's the natural evolution of of water bodies. But we have people now. And if the lakes fill up and now you've got a flood and now and you wash out a whole community because you allow the lake to fill up. We, we can't allow that to happen. And yeah, it's not going to happen in the short term, but it happens over a longer period and then you can't, you can't fix it because you can't dredge it. So it's, it's. Times have changed and you can't look at it as a pure unpopulated. Because we are, we're populated. As the population grows up around in all of the rural, urban and rural areas. There's more asphalt north concrete. Um, we're putting more and more houses on a, on an acre so that there's less land to absorb water. So there's more runoff and stormwater which floods in and brings dirt and sediment and everything else into the rivers and. And whatnot that's that's causing, it's going to cause long term. And short term ecological damage to those water bodies. So I think it would be who vas. To take a stand. And there is enough openings in state law for us to take a stand based on what you gave us.
So, okay, so Doug has talked about looking at the memo and going through that um, as a way to look at this. What do other folks think? Because there's that approach or there's looking at the text itself or. You know, what do you, what was, what's going to help you all uh, and be efficient?
I kind of like Doug's approach. Uh, it's a very good start.
Okay. So I can pull up the, I could pull up the memo and um. We can look through that.
Well, Andrew, I think that I've obviously read it in great detail and made it made notes, but. I'd need to that you sent that back out the first part of March and that's when I did it. I don't know when the others have reviewed it. You know, perhaps it would be appropriate that we, if we're going to review this document, that we do it next meeting instead of this one. So people have.
I was good. Yeah, I was going to say the other thing to do would be to just completely skip this section for right now. Uh, and then in the remaining time we've gotten this work session, we could potentially finish. Six hundred, the rest of six hundred. Um, that would certainly be an option. And then the next meeting would be this shoreline stabilization issue and then moving on into. Chapter seven hundred, because that's also something nineteen seven hundred is something that several weeks ago I was like. Read that and get your comments ready. We're going to be there any minute and it's now been a bit of a time. So I'm not sure if folks are ready to talk about that either. So. That may make no sense. And in the the direction that we send out in between meetings, we could say, take another look at this memo and this is going to be kind of a deep dive that we do with the next meeting. What do folks think about that?
I like that idea.
I do.
Okay.
Good with that.
Okay, good, then.
So, but I don't, I don't believe we're going to get through this chapter. Um, maybe the application requirements, get through that because development standard seem like that may take a bit.
That, that's why I'm saying if we completely skip shoreline stabilization, I think the only things left after that are transportation and utilities. And in in the next twenty minutes we've got, we might be able to finish that, but. It's up.
Okay, let's see where we go.
Okay, great. Comparatively speaking, I I think they're less, less of hot topics. So let's roll with that. Okay. Um, so I will go past this for now and we'll get some direction out to you guys on this. Okay. Okay, so transportation, um, nineteen six hundred one eighty. Does anyone have any thoughts on letters A or B? Or, yeah, A or B? There is no application requirements.
Andrew, I had one note this section and it's just a general statement, just. That all stormwater accumulated by developments must be drained away from the shoreline. To a settling pond. So when you have transportation, you know, you can't, you can't allow stormwater to run into. River streams or lakes directly. In any way, shape or form.
Yeah, I Doug, I think the problem there is, is that if those uh, stormwater facilities are outside of SMP jurisdiction, we can't tell them what to do first with SMP. So it's only stormwater that is generated within SMP jurisdiction that we would have to push out towards. A settling pond before it goes into, I I I don't know how we would do that because if if the stormwater is generated in my backyard, it can't drain to a settling pond before it drains into the lake.
If, um, it does, the, the SMP and state law allows, I mean, the state law allows the SMP to. I'll, I'll say regulate. I don't know if that's the right word, stuff that is outside its jurisdiction and if it impacts the shoreline. So we're allowed to do it. Um. And, and I, you know. Again, along with settlement and and pollutants and everything else in the growth in the county, I think it's important that stormwater not be allowed to go directly into. Water bodies of the state.
And that may already be a requirement. So any, anything that's built like this, again, is going to be subject to all the other rules that. Public Works is going to have to follow for doing transportation infrastructure. Um, any stormwater requirements that are part of that or they're, you know, non-point?
Yeah, you were going to check into that, maybe have Tim Wilson come in and talk to us, but. So this, the ecology allows stormwater to go directly into a lake or a water body as long as you have. Um, the dry well or something that theoretically allows the solids to settle out. But it does nothing for filtering out the pollutants.
Hmm. Okay, so you're proposing to add some language to that effect?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the. Um, stream team or not the stream team, um, uh, forgetting the organization now, one that's funded by the government. They say that seventy-five percent of the pollution in Puget Sound is due to stormwater.
True.
I mean, that's a big number.
Hmm.
And if, and if that's, if that is in fact the case and they're making that statement, they're funded by the government partially in life. Um. Then everything else we're doing is minutia compared to focusing on that one thing.
Hmm. So I'm looking through here just to see if there is a um. A natural place to kind of add that. Uh, but maybe number, maybe that goes up. So number one here talks about avoiding loss of ecological function. Um. Maybe it belongs somewhere up. Up there or maybe it belongs at, at the end. I'm not sure, but um, so Doug is making that proposal. Uh, what do other folks think? We may not get the language perfect tonight, but you know, it's something that I can earmark or. Draft something up if that's something that folks support.
Well, I, I, I like Doug's general idea that stormwater needs to be filtered out before it hits our lake streams and sound. Um, but I think that's, that's asking a lot. I think that public works when they start building new bridges and roads and. They say we're going by the drainage manual. Um, that might, that might turn into a big fight.
We require all housing developments to do it, so.
Well, say they rebuild a bridge that goes over the Deschutes River. Although all the rain that runs off that bridge would have to go into a s- a settling filter. Or settling pond in a filter before it could go into the Deschutes. Is that what you're suggesting?
Right, that's what they do. All the roads and everything in the development were roads. Theoretically through the countryside.
No, I would love it if we could do that, but I, I, I think that's going to add huge cost to, to those projects. Uh, and if. I, I like the idea, but I don't know if we'd be able to push that through.
And I think if that's something, if it's something the planning commission wants. To see or to explore, I mean, like one of my first stops is going to be talking to. Talking to our stormwater folks as to what they think about that or what they would say about that or what they're already doing. Um, just so that I learn more about it.
I sort of like the concept, but I question on like, you know, a road resurfacing or something. I mean. Whether it's, whether it's practical, yeah, if you could. Talk to us, I mean, and doesn't belong here, it doesn't belong in our stormwater code, but you could get some feedback from the stormwater folks. Then no more than I do about this, that'd be great.
Yeah.
See, what really happens here is that the people that live on those properties. On, on the shorelines and the lakes and muted sound or even just the people who use it, county residents are impacted by that. And it's all the county residents who are contributing to that pollution.
Good, yeah, yeah.
What ends up is, you know, in our case here on Long Lake, we have a lake management district and we're taxing ourselves to. Work on the water quality of the lake, but it costs us more to do the work. Because other county residents. Are dumping pollutants and 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 nourishment into our lake.
No, I, I understand that issue really well since that stormwater outfall is right on, on my property line. So everything. Every drop of oil that hits the road drains right down my property line into right in front of my dock. So I see a lot of that.
Okay, well, I will, I can look into it. Uh, like I said, I'll, I'll reach out to some folks and, you know, see what they're already doing or what may be possible or what the. The details of that approach. So. Okay, great. Um, anything else in development standards here? Otherwise, we will move down to. Utilities, which is, I think, the last. Section in here. Anyone have any comments in uh, section one eighty-five utilities? And if not. Um, I think we will be concluded. Yep, okay, great. So that, that concludes that and it concludes uh, my portion of tonight's meeting. So at the next meeting, and it will send this out in an email for folks, but. The next meeting will talk shoreline stabilization and um. Special report section. I'm not sure exactly how much time we have on the agenda, but depending how much time's on the agenda, I'll send out a, here's the reading list. Read these things because this might be what we can get to, but we'll just see what makes sense. Uh, if there are no further questions, uh, that concludes shorelines for tonight. Thank you.
Would you, um, I know I have a copy of this March third memo. Um, I don't know whether everybody else has kept a copy or could find it. You might want to resend that.
I will do that. It is on, it's on the planning commission website as part of the March third materials, but I will resend that and it will repost it uh, under. The full twenty-first or whatever that, yeah, the twenty-first so that, you know.
The better and 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 at least it'll ring everybody's bell, but this is what we're going to talk about.
Good. I can, I can do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Great job.
Thank you.
So Maya, looks like you're up.
Just a couple of staff updates tonight. Um, so first off, I would like to remind anyone who hasn't turned in their bio yet to turn, to do so as soon as you can. Um, thank you to those of you who have already turned it in. Jennifer assures me that we will send those out to the whole planning commission as soon as we receive one from everyone. Um, other updates, the wireless code which you reviewed at the second March meeting will be returning at the next April meeting. So you'll see that come before you again on the twenty-first of April. Along with the SMP. And uh, we talked earlier about the joint plan schedule, so Paulie will get that arranged and send out that meeting notice. Um, before the end of the week for next Thursday, April fifteenth and then um. Put on the agenda the potential hearing date for May twentieth. Other than that, the other update I want to share is that the Board of County Commissioners did adopt two revised official dockets. So. That happened yesterday on the sixth and they added two new projects to those dockets. So on the comprehensive plan amendment docket, Beaver Creek Land Use Amendment was added. And that is a three hundred and ninety acre uh, land use amendment and rezone request. And also the emergency housing ordinance was added to the development code docket. Um, at this time, the board hasn't reprioritized anything. So both of those projects are sitting at the bottom of the list and will be worked on. As other projects are finished and staff time frees up. And I believe that's all the updates I have for everyone. Any questions about anything I just talked about? Great, that's it for me.
Thank you. So we're going through calendar here. It looks like April twenty-first. Will anybody, will everybody be able to make it? And then May fifth. And then we have the special meeting. I'm going to be able to make it, Doug?
Will not be at the May, the May fifth meeting. I'll be out of town. I'm coming home, but might not get home too late.
Okay, I hope you're going somewhere fun.
Think good to my own.
Woo hoo. Okay, Eric might be a little late. Okay, and then don't forget this, the special meeting next Thursday. With Tom Water. Okay, great. And so we'll be getting noticed about that. Uh, anything for the good of the order? Okay, thank you staff for making me look good. And we're adjourned.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
See you. Hi.